I'm just calling the meeting to order. And we can start with board and administrative communications. So Tara.
I guess I would just mention that the curriculum meeting met. And we had a great discussion of all of the materials that we have gathered over this last period of time. We did surveys and we had public input in forum bases and with letters and we had research done. And so we got together and we talked, you know, as a part of our mission always, continuous improvement and enhancing learning opportunities for our students. It was a great conversation about, you know, what's our best next steps? What does the best, what do we look best at? What's good for our kids as far as how the education should be structured? There was a really great PowerPoint that was put together with all of this information and some research to kind of talk about the pluses and the minuses, the positives and the concerns. And the curriculum committee asked that it be also presented at the next facilities enrollment task force because it's taking the educational quotient of the project and put it in with the rest of the pieces of our study, our school study. So it was a great meeting. We learned a lot and I thought it was, Erin did a great job running us through the PowerPoint. And I just wanted to give that report.
Thank you. Sharon, you're up next.
So I, I'll keep it short, but I, I did attend the, there was a meeting the other day and maybe Lydia will talk more about it, but it was the reopen Connecticut Advisory Group Roundtable Meeting. And there were a number of people that if you, if you know, that are on the meeting from the state, but they also had some of the local college presidents on. And, you know, the resounding comments were around distance learning and, you know, what we've all had to do to come up to speed for that. And then, you know, the continuation of learning remotely. But some of the things that were interesting were some of the comments and that even the colleges are starting to think about. And one of the things I'll just share was, you know, as we all come together and start planning for the fall return, one of the things that they said that they are considering is when the kids, when the students come back to school and them leaving, that they will stay in school until maybe Thanksgiving and then come home. Rather than having those intermittent breaks, they'll have them in there for a period of time and then come home and then come back in the spring. And I thought that was just interesting for us, you know, as we start to think about, you know, do we stagger the return of students? Do we stagger the lower grades, the upper grades, you know, just to, that there are a number of different options out there that can be considered and how we use the time. So I thought that was really good. There's also another meeting where Commissioner Cardona is going to have on the 14th of this week, where he's just going to be talking to board members. And so that was posted out there by CAPE, so it's open and available to any of us. And that's how I found out the information is I've just been looking out there just to try to learn and hear what other people are thinking about. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And for either one of you, I was just curious, did they have any public school people in the roundtable? Like who's representing K-12?
So they, they did have somebody there from K-12 and they, they had somebody there from CEA. Lydia, did you?
Yeah, CAPE has represented, Bob Raider is on, Bob Raider is representing CAPE on there also from CAPS there is and, and I think a couple other groups. I'm not sure if PTA is on it. I think they were also asked to be on this, this, this roundtable, this group. So the regional advisory teams, they call them RATS, so for the shortcut acronym. But anyway, so that's where we have a voice for K-12 on that particular one also. And then there is the other group that includes the RESCs. So all five RESCs are included. Chris Wilson, who was president of CREC and Board Chair Bristol is on that one. So, so they will have another roundtable, I think Thursday, 7:00 PM. I have to check and see. But, but it's interesting just, just to listen to what's going on week by week.
All right, thank you. And Lyd, do you have anything else you want to share while you're talking?
Yeah, we've just had a lot of, we had the Board Chair Roundtables every Friday through CAPE. We've had a lot of webinars that have been going on also. We had one last week that Doug Casey, if many of you remember him, was a technology person for a long time with CREC and is also done to work with Simsbury. So he did a big webinar about the technology piece and in moving towards as we start reopening within, within districts. So that was a good one. These are all archived if they've gone through, through, through CAPE or CREC, so they're all archived, you can listen to them. So again, Commissioner Cardona will be on our call on this Thursday afternoon, I think at 1:00. So he'll be on that one. And again, just discussing where we are and going, going a little further into, obviously closing is where it is, but going further into summer school and transportation and what the outlook is going to look like as we start reopening schools. So, so that's where we, where we are at the moment. But anyway, I don't know if you heard, Wilton was also, you might have read about that? Yeah, so we had someone on a call from Wilton and they are taking the move to possibly reopen come into August, September. So that's just the preliminary pieces about that. Again, no subsequent processes in place yet that we've all been talking about around the state, basically the same thing, but they just, they just came forward and said that's what their, their plan of action is, is going to be. So we'll hear more on that. And I'm sure other districts as we go forward. So, so that's it. And again, graduations are all varied around the state of what districts are doing. Berlin is going to hold, host their graduations if things are okay with public health come August. So it really, it's just varied across the state in terms of graduation ceremonies or commencement or what have you. So.
Can I jump in for a quick minute?
Yep.
And I appreciate that information both Sharon and Lydia. And I know that, that Erin and Neil in Communications are going to update on some of our initial planning ideas. I think what's really important to understand and think about here is we are going to need regulatory guidance and that hasn't, that hasn't been forthcoming. This can't be a situation. So as board members are on these informative groups and have opportunities to ask questions, it's important to reiterate, we need consistent guidance about what parameters are. We can do our initial plan and we're doing that. And like I said, Neil and Erin will, will talk through pieces of that. But we've been told we're going to get specifics guidance on graduation. It hasn't come yet. Certainly as the data trends shift and mount, we will get guidance on potential scenarios for the fall. But I would say as advocacy for board, anytime you have an opportunity to talk about the need for consistent guidance and parameters to plan, we need, we need to push that as hard as that is to do. That'll be very important from an equity standpoint and an access standpoint across these districts. And that's a lot of the conversation amongst superintendents is the need for a little bit more specific direction on some of these things.
I'm glad you brought that up, Matt, because that is a question on board members is where, what is the next step? Where is that guidance that should be coming from the state, should be coming from, coming from the commissioner to be fanned out to districts? Because we have the same questions regarding our district, so do the others. And everyone is feeling, feeling that, that missing caveat question mark is, is okay, what's, where are the marching orders? How are we going to process with this if we don't have this all together? And so interesting, we also had on one of the calls, the mayor of North Haven, and he's also the chair of CCM. And he was also reiterating in CCM that they are also feeling the same thing in terms of the districts, because, because you have municipal and districts working, hopefully working side by side as we get through budget process. But also what are going to be the next steps that we do as communities and municipalities and school districts to move forward? So, so that is still the underlying question that, that we constantly push forward with that.
Okay, Jeff?
Hey, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Hey, just wanted to pick up on something that Tara mentioned earlier, just real briefly. I just wanted to echo, I thought we had a really great curriculum meeting and a presentation from Erin. And it was really about the, the academic perspective, the academic feedback on the whole facilities enrollment plan. And we are, again, just to remind the board, we're in the viewing public, we're really at the end of the Board of Education piece of this, which is really exciting. We're really down to two issues or two options rather. And what, you know, what we like to do is we will have a facilities enrollment committee meeting next week on the 20th, I believe it is. And then we hopefully would like to come back to the board the following week. So that's our 20, May 26th meeting. And hopefully, if everything goes well, have a vote on that day and have a recommendation, which is again, is very exciting after the, coming up on two years, really, if you've got to sit back and think about it, the two years of work that this board and administration has put behind this plan and this, in this review. So again, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that facilities enrollment next week, we're going to have a similar presentation from Erin and then hopefully come back to y'all on the 26th for a hopefully recommendation.
Great, thank you. Jen?
I'm all set.
Okay, Brian. Oh, you're muted, Brian.
All right, I switched to my phone, sorry. All set, thanks.
Okay, Todd?
Nothing.
All right, then. Ms. Lemke?
Good evening. I just wanted to share with the board that our meal assistance continues to operate very successfully on Mondays and Wednesdays. And principals this week will be sharing those guidelines again with families. So for those watching, just as a reminder, that meals are distributed on Mondays and Wednesdays at the high school in the exiting parking lot from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And the only criteria is that you have self-identified need. So if you require some assistance, please feel free to take advantage of that opportunity.
That's great. Thank you, Sue. It's so important for everybody who can to get that. Mrs. Murray?
So, thank you. Good evening. As Matt mentioned, we are in the midst of pulling together what we're calling a reopen Simsbury Public Schools Teaching and Learning Team. We've had several conversations over a number of weeks of what teaching and learning will look like, obviously as we complete this school year, but also as we look into summertime and obviously the open, opening in August and September. What we are doing, we're meeting Friday for our first meeting. I've got a group of about 17 people. It's more of an administrative kickoff to the conversation, but I've designed a three-tiered model in which to then include department supervisors, teacher leaders, a board member potentially would be nice to have on the committee as well as parent voices as we go through this. The third tier would be obviously bringing teacher leaders into the conversation so that we can make sure that we're talking to all members of the community as we begin to think through the teaching and learning process as we go forward. We will actually be working on the heels, and Neil's going to talk about it next, on the heels of his committee, his reopening organizational management committee, because we need to know, as Matt mentioned, what those guidelines are in order to present teaching and learning opportunities for our students in Simsbury.
That's great. Thank you for that. It's going to be great, important work. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so thank you to Tara and Jeff who mentioned our facilities work and that task force meeting that Jeff mentioned for next Wednesday is going to be a 5:00 PM Zoom. We figured since people on that group are pretty much home anyway, we could Zoom before dinner rather than right in the middle of it. So 5:00 PM for that meeting.
And we're assuming that, right, Neil? I'm sorry.
Yes. Mark Reinstein has agreed to help us make sure that that's out there for the public as well. So that's, that was good news. And then to, for just a minute about the, we're calling it the reopening Simsbury Schools Task Force. We met for the first time on Monday afternoon. This is a group of really a lot of the logistics and operational people who are going to have to execute whatever guidance we get and make a whole lot of decisions, probably in a changing landscape. So it involves our maintenance and some head custodians. It involves our health services people, Jennifer Kurtanis from the Farmington Valley Health District, our technology people, our finance people. And in addition then, representation for the different challenges at the different levels of high school, middle school, elementary. And then we finished the first meeting and realized we also need to add preschool and after-school care, the seed program, onto that. And we missed St. Mary's School. So we'll be adding them for the second meeting of our task force. So really a great initial discussion. We put a whole lot of thinking out on the table without answers just yet, but it was really good to come together for about an hour and 15 minutes and really just articulate all the challenges that an eventual reopening will bring and get people starting to talk about that. I'm modeling the committee after a group that I participate in every Thursday morning. Sean Askam from the Board of Selectmen is running a weekly public safety committee meeting. And it really, it goes from eight to nine every Thursday morning since this all started. And it's really an exceptional reporting from all the key players and first responders across Simsbury. And we're glad the Board of Ed is able to participate on it because it's just a great, everybody goes off and does their own work, but then the coordination in that meeting is just terrific. And that's how I picture running this task force. We'll meet, our next meeting will be right after Memorial Day. We're going to meet every two weeks for right now. And then we'll probably ramp it up to weekly in the summer as we anticipate what we hope will be a late August return in some form to the Simsbury Public Schools. So outstanding first meeting and we're looking forward to the great challenges of that work.
That's great. Thank you, Neil. And now, where am I going? Is, Matt, are we going to Amy or Jason or you? Where are we headed?
I think, I think we're all set. They, you know, they have reports to provide so we can move to, we can move to actions and I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
You're good? Okay, terrific. So now on to recommended actions, approval of the minutes of the April 23rd meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
In a second?
Second. You're Sharon.
Any discussion, changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's to approve. Next, we have approval of the minutes of April 28th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion or changes or abstentions? I see none. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. A gift from Lattimer Lane PTO.
Okay, so that one is me. This is actually a really neat story. I talked to Mike Lizetti about this and they had an enormous tree on the playground that the kids would use for shade when they played, they'd use as part of their tag game. The tree got diseased, they needed to take the tree down. There was a huge effort by Ms. Snyder's second grade class, a real push on Mr. Lizetti with letters and presentations to try to find a way to replace the tree. So the PTO is actually supporting that with a very generous donation. It's a sugar maple tree. It's already 20 feet tall, the plant on the, plant on the playground. So really a neat thing and Mike wanted me to reiterate Mr. Lizetti for him tonight, how thankful he is for both his students' actions and the PTO support.
Nice.
That's terrific.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's nice.
Yeah. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, I think, to, that the proposed, proposed gift of commemorative sugar maple tree from the Lattimer Lane PTO should be approved.
I'll second.
Jen can go.
Any discussion?
It's just the nicest thing. It's such a great treat.
That makes me very happy. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That's fabulous. Thank you to the PTO. What a thoughtful gift.
And the kids, don't forget to be thanking the kids.
And the kids, but.
It's really cool.
Very thoughtful, nice of the kids to take it on. Next exhibit, end of year fiscal authorizations?
Yeah, so we have, we have a few motions to work through here this evening. This is an annual situation that we take on at this point of the year when we get ready to do budget transfers, renew applications for our grants and hire staff over the summer. So this would give authorization to the superintendent to act on the board's behalf for those actions. The first motion is about renewing grant applications such as IDA, our Title I grants. We would ask that the board would move to ensure we could carry out action on that behalf.
Okay, can I get a motion from someone, please?
Sure, I'll move it.
Go ahead, Todd. Oh, I have something to read it, so I'll just move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to act as the board's agent in renewing applications for state and federally funded programs.
In a second. And any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next.
All right, so the next one is about budget transfers. So I know that Amy's with us tonight and she's going to talk us through the quarterly later on in the meeting, but this is about kind of year-end transfers and allowing us to move dollars from budget line items where there's a surplus into budget line items where there is a, is a decrease or a default and balance the budget out that way. So these actions are done in concert with Kira, she and our budget analyst and Amy, but I would ask that the board move the motion at the top of the screen there.
All right, so we're going to take these in three motions, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get someone to read us the first one, please?
Move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I do.
Okay.
So when the move in the transfer is made, do we end up, is that noted, Matt, somewhere that we'll be able to see it came from here and went to there?
So those are, those are things we normally talk through as highlights of the quarterly report, Sharon. If there's more detail than given there, we can always, always provide that, but we normally talk about those adjustments on a quarterly basis.
Right, so if it's done over the summer, then we would talk about it, what, in the September meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? I get, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Can someone read the next one, please?
Well, let me give a little background on those conclusions. No, that's okay. For some of the newer board members, they're both relative to the non-lapsing account, which I think will certainly come into play this year. With school being out of session, we are going to realize some level of savings. Amy's going to talk about that, some of the early projections. But these two motions, what they allow is for us to make decisions in concert with the Board of Finance on putting excess dollars into the non-lapsing fund. And then if we need to extend those funds, having an act conversation with the Board of Finance as well.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Do you need to read it?
I'll read it. Move, sorry. Move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent or designee with the Board of Finance approval to approve any and all expenditures from the non-lapsing account for the unexpended education funds account.
Okay. Can I get a second, please?
One second.
Second it. She read the third one, though.
Right, go back and read the middle one next. I caught that, we'll just go back and read the middle one next.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, Lyd. So discussion on the third motion about the unexpended funds? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so now can someone read the middle motion?
Move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to request Board of Finance approval for the deposit of unexpected funds at the cost, at the close of the fiscal year into the non-lapsing account for, for unexpected educational funds account as authorized by state law. The amount of said deposit will be no more than 2% of the board's current year operating budget. Unexpected funds over the 2% threshold will be returned to the town general fund balance.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you all for that. So now we're on to information and reports and update on the Henry James Project.
We have one.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
That's okay, that's okay. This one is if there are staffing needs, unexpected staffing needs during the summer, we need to make movement about staffing and authorizes us to carry out that action as well.
Sorry about that. May I get that motion?
Move that the superintendent, with the approval of the board chairman, be authorized to hire staff for the 2020-21 school year during the period of July and August when the board is not in session.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's amazing that we are already at the point of the year that we're doing these, these motions.
I know, 2020 is flying by but not.
Unbelievable.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now information and reports?
You got it.
Okay.
So we, we have Jason Casey with us tonight and we were, we didn't quite get to this at our last meeting. And I know he's excited and I'm excited to talk through and share some of the progress that's been made at Henry James. One of the things that this closure has allowed us to do is really move forward efficiently with the project. So Jason's just going to share some of that information with us tonight and can certainly answer any questions you have. Go ahead, Jason.
All right. Yeah, one more slide. There we go. And so Phase 3 is coming to a close. We've already completed Phases 1 and 2, so the library is, is now full of books and looks great. I have some pictures coming up from the slideshow. Phase 3 where we're working on the auditorium and some more classrooms, I have pictures of that as well, it's looking great. Due to the school closure, we've been able to move things that were in Phases 4 to 5 up into Phase 3. So by the end of May, some things such as some of the work that was happening in the gymnasium and many of the Phase 4 classrooms have been taken care of already and additional work wrapping up by the end of this month. So these areas are looking great. So, uh, these areas are looking great. The family and consumer sciences wing is, uh, the main focus right now. A lot of activity going on at that point. Um, the project is estimated to be at about 82% completion now. And advance the slides.
Wow. Looks great.
New library. Hmm, looks good.
And, uh, yep, there we go. And the, uh, the auditorium is looking outstanding.
I just can't get over that library, my gosh, from where we were to where we are.
So exciting.
All right. That was my very brief update of the Henry James Construction Project.
We held you over for that, Jason. Oh, my goodness.
Oh.
I want more.
Thank you, Jason, that was great.
That's terrific. So, so the closure has really helped us kind of keep the project going at a quick rate, Ben.
It's in bounds, yeah.
Can I ask? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, on that, the completion date, there was a slide that you had up there that said the completion date was now, or was September, the end of September? Is there any way that that will move up before school ends because of the closure or no?
You mean before school begins?
Before school begins, right.
Um, as it stands now, we're still holding to that date mainly because there have been some deliveries that have been held up. So, for instance, even though we've been able to work in the auditorium, uh, and get a lot of the, the, uh, work done that wasn't expected to even start at this point, uh, we still have some items that were due to ship in later. So there's nothing we can do until we get to that point. So at this point, they're still projecting that the, uh, the dates are, are holding.
Okay. That's great. That's just fabulous. I can't even believe it. It's nice to see. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Or comments? Okay. Um, so then we're moving on to our equity update. Thank you, Jason.
Great, so, uh, that's over to me, Susan, and just wanted to share with the board where we are at relative to our equity work. You know, certainly, we want to be able to balance the enormity of the operations and teaching and learning in light of the pandemic, but also recognizing that we had begun some pretty extensive, deep work on equity that was based upon the Simsbury Public Schools, uh, Board of Education goals and our strategic plan. So just as a quick reminder, those four goals of student growth and success, caring and compassionate, compassionate and connected school culture, our premier workforce and strategic sustainable investments. And each one of those goals has through it threads of equity and that are kind of woven together for this tapestry of success moving forward. So as Katie advances the slides, you'll remember this graphic, um, of how this work comes together. And certainly, we have the Equity Council, which was a new structure for us this year, and, uh, want to, this evening, share with the board the accomplishments of that group and what we see as the next steps moving forward, but also our community group of the, of Spirit Council, which had a lot of plans that are temporarily stalled due to the pandemic, but bringing these, um, issues of equity to the larger community. And Erin Pryor had given us a report on the curricular work that was being done relative to equity, the continued work at the high school in collaboration with the Re Center. So this all comes together in most predominantly in that strategic goal number two of, uh, compassionate and caring school culture. So Katie, if you can just kind of advance and, and just want to remind the Board of Ed the purpose of Equity Council. And that will be my focus of this evening is to provide you an update relative to that group. It's really to take a deep look and assess what issues are impacting access, experiences, the, the actual deliverables or outcomes for our students, and to make recommendations to Matt, who will then bring them to this board for consideration, to really look at ways in which through planning and policy that we can work to eliminate any equity gaps that are present. Go ahead, Katie. So some accomplishments of the, the Equity Council. You know, first and foremost, just want to highlight again our collaboration with the Center for School Change. So we had two dynamic co-facilitators, Carrie Lord, as well as Patrice Nelson, helping us to think through our steps here in Simsbury. And that collaboration has been extremely powerful in the facilitation of those deep conversations. You know, up until the point of school closure, we had our last equity meeting, um, in February, and the one in March was supposed to happen the week after schools closed, but we had those monthly meetings with very strong attendance, stakeholders that were community members, uh, parents, students, administrators, teachers, coming together to talk about these issues, again, really predicated, um, in our strategic plan. And, and part of that work was to develop, develop what we call our equity lens. How do we look at policies? How do we look at our data with this developed lens of equity around who's represented, who isn't, and how do we provide access to the rich and meaningful experiences that we offer as a school community? We also did a lot of professional development just among ourselves, um, as members of Equity Council. You know, we would have those experiences to explore equity, what we called those triple Es each time, that had us look at a different aspect of equity in our community, both in Simsbury and the larger community, and how do we become better at identifying these issues and bringing them to the board for consideration? So certainly, um, we've also noted whether it be students through their conversations, but, you know, ourselves as administrators, these anecdotal changes and conversations in practice, issues that we're bringing up that, you know, I'm not so sure if it's more just because it's highlighted now, but I know personally I'm noticing a difference. So when we're talking about events, we are exploring those events and saying, hey, we need to think about this and this and this, and how do we ensure that all students have access to, again, those opportunities? Um, certainly, we're, we're also talking about data. And right at the, um, onset of the school closure, we were beginning our own practices within Equity Council of how do we look at data? So some of us that sit on Equity Council are well-versed in data dives and some of us are not. And recognizing that each of us are at a different place, how do we come up with some kind of standards of looking at data? So when we delve into Simsbury-specific data, we're kind of all talking the same language for the best outcomes as possible. And then I think the, one of the greatest accomplishments is that we have a very solid, uh, draft of a district definition of equity, which is inclusive of what we believe as a public school community, and what are the actions or the stances that we believe will be in place to make our definition alive and well in the Simsbury Public Schools. So I'll be chatting with you more about that in just a moment. You can go ahead, Katie. So for the remainder of this year, again, we're trying to balance, um, where our students are, where our community members are during this pandemic. Um, but we also want to make sure that we continue and close the loops on some open loops that we were working hard on. So as I shared with you with that definition, um, stance and core beliefs, what we want to propose are, are two more meetings that we will hold virtually with Equity Council. One that we want to have happen at the May meeting that was already, that date was already kind of set aside for Equity Council. And we want to take a test drive of that equity definition and core belief substance and do a little time test through distance learning. You know, we have this, this document that we want to have function as a sentinel tool to drive our equity work. Let's test it out through distance learning. What a better way to look at issues of equity. We know that that's been a common theme, um, in Simsbury to discuss through distance learning as well as across the state and across the nation, um, because distance learning does bring up some issues of equity. So where did we hit the mark with, um, that statement? Where have we fallen short and are there any adjustments that we need to make either in our practice through distance learning or through the statement itself, um, to say that, yeah, we really believe that this definition, stance and core beliefs will stand as a true tool for us to use for future, um, recommendations through policy and practice? Um, also at that meeting, we want to do a, a self-assessment of where we've been as a group and where we would like to go. So the Center for School Change has developed a, a pretty comprehensive assessment that will get at both individual and group deepening, um, in our own practices and potential next steps moving forward. So we would, um, introduce that self-assessment at that meeting and then have a turnaround to collect that data to inform further our practices and next steps. Then the second meeting in June will really be a data dive into our Simsbury-specific data, um, more specifically into culture and climate. So in February, when administrators met together, we looked at our achievement data. What does that say relative to equity? And really wanted to charge Equity Council with, uh, doing a deeper dive into that culture and climate data. So we would review our self-assessment results and then look at what disparities lie in that data? What assumptions and questions do we have? And those questions would lead into recommendations for either Equity Council, for administrators, for policies and practices that we would bring to you as the Board of Ed. So that's what we would see happening for the remainder of this year. And then Katie, that last slide is really the next steps after that. So we will have actually a very good amount of information to come back to share with the board. Um, certainly, I see this outlined in a summary document that steps back, that certainly we could use as a more public document to share the work of equity in the Simsbury Public Schools over the past year, that really outlines the process the Equity Council took, um, what the membership and structures were, things that we're really proud of, as well as what does the data show us as far as what we need to look deeper into? What questions do we now have relative to achievement, to climate? Um, and what does that say for, again, that access for all students in our community? Um, and then that work for Equity Council in year two, to say, okay, how do we get at some of the answers and some of the root causes with what we're seeing as far as the data themes and to bring those back to you for, um, potential considerations? So, you know, certainly along with the Equity Council work, uh, in the update that we provided the board in January, um, we had also shared a one-pager that, you know, certainly this is the work that the district is doing through this council, but the principals and administrators are also extremely passionate about moving equity in their actual individual buildings. So you might recall that one-pager where it said, this is what Two in Hills is going to be working on, this is what Henry James is going to be working on. Certainly, some of that summary document will also encapsulate the work accomplished there and those next steps moving forward. So, you know, in light of the pandemic, in light of school closure, just wanted to share with you that this, uh, work on equity remains a focus and a passion and something that's not going to go away for us because it's going to make us better in the long run for and with our students. I open it up for any questions or, or comments.
I think it's great. I'm, um, very happy that the two meetings will go because there are so many great kids on this council with us, and a lot of them have really put their hearts and souls in this, and I'm so glad they're going to be part of just, you know, our, what we're going to put out in the fall, too, because I don't, I'm glad that they're not going to miss that with everything else as, if they, as they go off to school. So thanks for making sure we get this in.
No, thank you. I think there, you, you've hit it so poignantly, Tara, that there is an investment here, a personal investment for each, um, Equity Council member, um, because they're passionate about this work and to be able to kind of see some of the, the many efforts being moved forward, um, I think is going to be very powerful.
Yeah, it's great.
I echo the same comments. I'm, I'm really happy that we're able to, um, you know, as the school year closes out, that we're able to involve them and have them, um, see, you know, the completion of the work thus far. So I think it'll be important to them, you know, with all the other things that they've not been able to participate in, um, I'm glad they'll be able to participate in this.
Thank you, Sharon.
There were some passionate young people part of our discussions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
A lot of hard work. It was really great to be part of it.
Anybody else?
And then thanks to you, Sue, for the report out. You know, thank you for that.
You're absolutely welcome. You know, it was a really important, uh, when Matt and I were discussing this, that, um, we kind of share out how, you know, you, you mentioned, Sharon, th- these, um, celebrations that students haven't been able to kind of see to fruition, and this is really important. And again, embedded in our strategic work that will continue, and they certainly have put in some huge first steps into making this happen for our district.
And then also, it's important for the community to know that the work is continuing, you know, and that even though we're in this pandemic, you know, we haven't forgotten about, you know, some of the things that we, we started, so.
I think that, that's a great point, Sharon, and I think that when we get to the point in year two where we can take the recommendations and closely tie them to the board goals and regularly report out, we'll be in really good shape from a communication standpoint.
Yes.
That's wonderful. I, thank you, Sue, for spearheading this and, and keeping it moving forward, um, challenging, I'm sure, since March, but very much appreciate all your work on this and, and leading a great team of people who are equally as passionate about it, I'm sure, um, and look forward to hearing what you guys have to tell us and, and how we can help this work forward next year.
Great, thank you, Susan.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so then we're on to our distance learning survey results.
Great, so I think Aaron, Aaron's going to walk us through, um, this piece of the puzzle, and I, I would just, I would just frame it by saying this information for us as a district, I think is both timely, um, because as Aaron will talk about, we're able to make some adjustments based on the really good feedback we got. Um, but also really important as we long-term plan with the uncertainty going into next year, if distance learning should be some part of our programming, uh, what significant changes can we make in our planning throughout the end of the year and, and moving into the new year? So I'll turn it to Aaron, but it was really, uh, a wide range of really outstanding input from our, uh, parent community.
All right, thank you. So, you know, as you know, we had, uh, sent out a survey about 10 days ago, collected that data back last Tuesday and began to go through, um, a, a number of responses, um, from our families regarding our distance learning. We had over 1,700 responders to this survey, which certainly gave us a wealth of information from which to work from. So tonight, what I'm going to do is be sharing with you the themes that emerged from the elementary, middle and high school levels. Um, with the two areas of focus that I'll be talking about tonight are the areas that parents, families, guardians saw as the best part of our distance learning program and areas for ongoing improvement. So I'm looking at it from the district perspective, um, but we'll be talking about it from K6, 7, 8 and 912. So next slide, please. So we'll start with the elementary, and I think what's really, um, important here is parents are telling us that, uh, the routines, the structure and the flexibility that's been put in place with distance learning has been a very strong positive aspect of our program. The kinds of communication and connection.
The kinds of communication and connections that teachers are having with students is something that they feel very strongly about and many, many people spoke about. The support that families are getting in regard to special education from our special education teachers to students has been extremely positive. And the access to district devices was something that, again, as a reminder, we don't do a one-to-one program in K six, but we have been able to deploy devices to families. And they're quite appreciative for that. As we look at the ways to improve at the elementary level is really that although we have time with kids, it's their parents and guardians are asking for more opportunities for real time instruction, real time with. I'm sorry, I think I got muted there for a minute. The other piece that has been a bit of a struggle for our K six is the use of technology. The amount of platforms and software and devices that have been needed was really difficult to begin the distance learning. So finding ways to enhance that ability to access the links and the documents is something of great importance to our families. The other piece that parents were talking about and guardians was the notion of broadening the content and the learning, providing new learning opportunities. A lot of conversation around science and social studies and the lack potentially of it. We certainly focused on reading, writing, math areas, so looking for that. I can tell you just on the side that our sixth grade team is looking to do a two week science unit that will be upcoming. So I just heard about that today. So I think that will be a nice way to respond to this, but also to give kids more experience and broaden the contact. And the other loud voice that we heard from our K six families was the way in which to balance screen time with hands-on materials. That was a really important piece. One of the things that we know, we certainly found it out very quickly in this is the K two access to technology, use of technology. And the amount of parental support and guidance was extreme, is extreme. And we have to continue to be thinking about that as we go forward. So we'll move to the middle school now and look at what they're seeing. So Katie, you could move the slide. As we look at the middle school, they had their one-to-one devices. So the use, very appreciative of the technology platforms, the live time that that middle school students had with their teachers and of course, having their own devices from which to work from. What came out with expectations, routines and schedule was done with such clarity. They were very appreciative of that aspect of it. And clearly, the flexibility that this kind of distance learning has given to families and to students has actually increased the independence level and the responsibility and time management aspect of these developing adolescents. And I can't even begin to tell you the number you're going to hear again at the high school, but the late, the late opening for kids certainly gave them the opportunity to be very well rested to step into the nine o'clock portion of their learning. For areas for ongoing improvement, as you can see, although they were appreciative of the platforms and the live classrooms with teachers, certainly articulation around longer live classroom meetings, opportunities for students to engage more fully or for longer periods of time. Really thinking about that rigor and challenge that we're giving to middle school students. Parents are looking for more of that as well as the feedback that students get from their teachers. In order to, although appreciative of the flexibility that was provided, really the need to record lessons so that they can be reviewed or they can be watched at a later time. That certainly would continue to provide that flexibility to families. They're looking to have us continue to use Power School to keep them informed of student progress and to communicate with them. So more access to that. And more, this was, I think, something that was definitely repeated, became a very strong highlight at the middle school level, was the need to create more support systems around the social emotional aspect of students, really to address that anxiety and mental health issues. So something that we want to continue. I know there's been a, an increase and an expansion of the work that we were doing. But this certainly provided us feedback that said, we want more, we need more for our middle school students. Okay, Katie, we can go to the high school. So, you know, as we look at the, the column that outlines the best parts of this work, again, one-to-one technology, they had their devices, the live lessons, when students were able to really connect with their teachers was really positive. The flexibility, the structure of the schedule were positive remarks that we received from the families. Again, they talked about the student responsibility. It reinforced the independence, the self advocacy of our high school students. It really pushed them into being much more organized in the sense of planning for learning when they're not in a regular school building. Obviously, looking for those ongoing connections, wanting to not only with their teachers, but with peers. Lots of comments that talked about it appeared to be less homework. It was a very positive comments that they gave, which then results in less stress for students. And as you can see here, the later start time was a comment that was sprinkled throughout, saying that this was better for our students. So as we look at the ways to continue improve our distance learning, and again, remembering this work has been an evolution, will continue to evolve over time, but really looking for new learning, challenging students, reinforcing their learning, providing them that timely feedback, providing extra help time for students when necessary. They're really looking for a much more, much more rigor and challenge for students at the high school level. They're also talking and saying that these lessons need to be recorded. There are times when students need to go back, review, or there are times when a student can't engage at the time that they're live and then need them at a later time. So certainly something that we're looking at. Many comments regarding the schedule, as you know, we put together, it's a five day schedule, but Monday, Tuesday, our instruction, Thursday, Friday instruction. Wednesday was more of the office hour time for teachers, guidance counselor connections and other kinds of connections. And there were many, many comments that said, we'd like to see a five day schedule for our high school students. And then finally, as you look at the, the notion of supporting students, that ongoing collaboration, many comments around kids with disabilities, 504 kids, ADD kids, ADHD kids, wanting to ensure that we're providing them the collaboration between their support educators and the general educators. And then again, the social emotional support, ensuring that we're providing that opportunity for that mental health support for students. We are definitely in different times and we're all seeing different kinds of, of ways and reactions to this situation that we just didn't know what it was going to be like. And we want to find ways and continue to find ways to support our students across the board, K 12. So this, this data, this information was divided amongst all of our building principals. They've had the opportunity to review, to individually review their data. They will be and are in the midst of communicating the, the best parts and the ways for ongoing improvement with their faculty. And by the end of the week, they will be putting out a message to families regarding their feedback that was provided for us. We're also looking by the end of the week to have a teacher survey so that we can survey our educators regarding their experience in distance learning so that we can gather feedback to continue to inform us. And the teaching and learning team that I talked about earlier will be really important to have. And then following that, within the next week to two weeks, we'll be looking to survey students to get their feedback regarding the distance learning experience. So in all, you know, we do believe that this feedback has certainly provided us with information that we can work with and ways that we can continue to improve. I want to thank our, our families for taking the time to fill out the survey that they did and then providing us with such open and very direct feedback in order to help us with our ongoing efforts to improve the work that we're doing in distance learning.
Anybody have any questions that they would like to ask or comment?
That's a great report. Really appreciate sifting it down to these salient points because I think it's so much easier to understand. I also am wondering how many emails or communications you're getting without the survey from parents? And what the feelings you're getting from that are?
So it's interesting, you know, between, you know, we try to share with one another and we haven't had a tremendous amount of, of emails. A dozen to two dozen emails that have come in periodically over the last eight weeks of this work. But we're trying to provide immediate feedback to those people that are coming in. But I think this survey did provide for some very open, as I said, very open, direct feedback opportunities for parents.
Erin, I would just add to that probably a similar volume of communication on my end. Primarily feedback from parents and guardians who have young children and the challenges around supporting the lack of independence, the technology and juggling that with their own work schedules. So this is where depending on the home environment and the work responsibilities during this pandemic, people's experiences can be vastly different. But the feedback has been really important to us as we've moved forward and thought about it. But that's been the majority of the feedback that I've received.
Thanks.
Hey, I had a question. First, a comment. Just, I thought really great feedback. I mean, quickly drill down to some of the opportunities for us to really take this, this program to the next level. And I would really, really encourage us to do so. I mean, right in the professional world, we, this is part of it, right? You, there is virtual learning. We have WebEx meetings, we have Zoom meetings. So, you know, we were, had to create this through a very unfortunate situation, but I think there's some positives that we can take out of it. And I again, highly encourage us to keep, you know, finessing and improving this and to incorporate it into the program going forward. But really, my, my question is, like, I guess this is really probably more primarily at the K six level, but just curious, how many, did we have to buy Chromebooks for, for, for families, hotspots, any? What's the, you know, do you have any metrics or stats around, you know, some of the, the, just the, the infrastructure, the, like I said, the technology we may have had to provide for the families out there?
Okay. So we have, over the last few years, been able to provide Chromebook carts for our third grade through sixth grade classrooms, but they were not assigned one-to-one. So when this all began, Jason Casey and his team took Chromebook carts out of particular buildings. I think they've gone to three elementary schools and taken those. We've distributed 436 Chromebooks, 26 of them to teachers because they didn't have them and 410 of them to students. In regard to hotspots, we did order, we ordered 12 of them. We've dispersed six of them out and we still have one, I believe, that's potentially waiting for a hotspot. But we wanted to ensure that we had enough, that we could provide the, number one, the devices and the hotspots available to families that just didn't have the internet connection.
No, I appreciate that. And I guess I'm, really the reason for the question is, right, there's, there's a, there's a, there was a misperception in some corners, I believe, in this town that since the kids are not physically in the schools, that there's a budget savings. And obviously we'll hear from Amy, you know, out there. And I just, I just wanted to point out, we've, okay, we've dispersed over 400 Chromebooks. You heard earlier Sue's great report about the meals we're serving. I just wanted to point out that there are costs clearly that, that the Sims Berry Public School system is incurring throughout the pandemic.
Right. The other piece, Jeff, that I didn't mention is that we have distributed 140 iPads.
Wow.
Our K two. And we do have, you know, I can see it here, but, and Jason could certainly speak about it. But we meet weekly and as of Friday. So not only has our, you know, our distribution of, of devices certainly went up and it's coming down, but we also have the opportunity for repairs. And so where that was low when we began it, it's climbed now. And so Jason and his team are adjusting and dealing with repair requests that come in. And we try to be as quick as we can with those.
That's, that's amazing. And hats off to you and the team. I mean, over 500 Chromebooks and iPads, you know, and all the repair. I just know how my little guys and all their technology, just, just great stuff. Thanks.
Erin, I was curious, like, just a process issue, like, how are we going about? And has anybody thought about, like, all those textbooks? Do the kids have all those textbooks at home, don't they? Or do they leave? And so will we, will we get those back or how? What is your plan?
So that's, that's a very good question. We actually had a secondary principals meeting yesterday. And so we're talking about a drop off. We're going to have bins. You know, I think of the high school and the circle in the back and we'll have a social studies bin and a math bin and a science bin and a world language where somehow, some way, we are going to have to plan to have those materials returned as well as library media texts and those kinds of things. The other piece that we have out that we'll have to be thinking about are some musical instruments, some uniforms that kids have, the sports uniforms. So we are in the process and Neil was part of that conversation with me at secondary principals yesterday. But we are looking for a plan and we will articulate that and communicate that with families because we are looking to get those textbooks back so that when we begin learning again in August, that we have the availability to assign those texts back out.
Thanks. With the devices that were being borrowed, will those people have to return them? Or will they be able to keep them till next year?
So that, we want students to be able to have their devices over the summertime. What we're planning is to provide some opportunities for learning in the summertime, some activities for students that they can continue to engage in. But again, that's where Jason and John Cia-Litwinnick are really looking at the current eighth graders going to ninth graders. Those Chromebooks are going to have to come back so that they can get new ones going into ninth grade. The sixth graders or any of the devices that we've loaned out, we need to pull back in. And that's where Jason is working and John Cia on what do we need? Because we want to ensure that every kid does have a device come the start of the 2021 school year because of the unknown aspect of what school might be like. So in order to ensure that they have a device that they can take back and forth is going to be a critical aspect and a cost. And we, and we're working on that right now. So we have a lot of planning to do over the next.
And I, and no rush, I, I was just also, the last thing and I'll stop is just the, on the flip side, I, I don't think, or at least I didn't personally know that this was going to be the end when they left in March. So do kids have clothes and items and things at the, yeah, okay.
So that's the other piece that we. So that's the other piece that we're working on. I know Neil is, and he can speak about that as well.
Jen, it's like you were at our amazing local principals yesterday. You're asking all the questions they've been asking me. So, so our plan really, assuming that the data that the governor and his officials are watching trends the same way, is that if the stay at home order lifts on May 20th as expected, we're going to allow teachers to be able to get back into their classrooms as needed to kind of pack up that stuff along with the head custodians. The custodians have already been through some lockers. And so it's going to be kind of a process of bagging stuff up. And then at some point in June, having like a curbside pickup for people of kind of your stuff. So that's, that's the goal of what we're going to try to organize, but we've really just started talking about that in the last few days.
And no rush. So thank you, thank you.
So man, I have a question regarding the technology. So I know that we had provided for some of our upgrades, but like Erin mentioned, we had some that we had to fill in a gap. Are we going to get, are we getting reimbursed for technology?
So you're talking about FEMA reimbursement?
Well, yeah, either through that or, you know, through some of the funding that's coming down federally. Because I know in other districts, you know, there were, I mean, there may have been like, you know, Dalio or somebody may have donated. And in Hartford, I think Dell or somebody donated, but you know, for us, we still had a gap of kids who didn't have. And so I'm just wondering if there's any funding coming to kind of augment some of that.
The, the funding that we've been told about relative to the CARES Act, close to $100,000 probably sharing similar to our Title I funding. So we can look at different ways to utilize that funding. And I believe technology in the past is a place where we've used those different Title I funds to support. So it's a possibility we can look into that funding, but it wouldn't be like a replacement source based on handout technology.
Okay.
Sorry, Neil, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I will also add, and Amy is very aware of this, that through the Public Safety Committee meeting and all the various, we are tracking all of our COVID related costs very closely because we've been asked to do that through the FEMA process of reimbursing after disasters. So our business office is tracking COVID related costs. That's money that could be a couple of years down the road and come back, but they are asking you to do very specific accounting of it.
I can also just jump in and add to that. I was actually on the call for FEMA related to the FEMA funding and part of the CARES Act for the state. And there were actually very specific questions as to what is going to be reimbursed and what's not going to be reimbursed. And of course, technology came up as one of the items requesting for reimbursement for not only students, but for faculty and staff that need to work from home as well. So it's a question, pretty much the same question was asked multiple different ways and we all got the same answer is submit for everything. We don't know what we're reimbursing for yet and we'll let you know. So that has, that was the same thing for food expenses. That was the same thing for revenue losses, technology, gift card purchases, food purchases for even like the social services programs, things of that nature. So everything really is still up in the air as to what we're going to be reimbursed for and what, what we're going to have to take on within the budget.
So Erin, my last comment was, I, I was really glad to see the honesty that came in on, you know, what we did well in the areas that we can improve. And I'm, I was also glad to see, you know, because, you know, the few that I did talk to, one of the areas I think would be the mechanism in which we were doing online, you know, so that, you know, you think about how online classes are today for college. And, you know, I can take that class at any time, but I, I'm able to go back and look at it and play it. And I think that for our young people is more, you know, it's helpful, you know, and I think it's relatable, you know? We're, we're in those ways, we can have our own teachers. You know, if they're okay about recording would even be greater, you know? Because then there's that physical and I know the teacher, I know who they are. So I was glad to see that.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yes. So my question is more for the elementary level. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So my older kids in middle school and high school have really settled into their schedules. This is from a personal standpoint. It's been a little bit more of a challenge for my son who's in elementary. So my question is, and I saw it came up on the survey a couple of times regarding the Google meets, kind of trying to come up with a, a strategy or a schedule or a way for us to use technology so that they know when their Google meets, meetings are. And that's been a challenge, whether it's his math teacher, his homeroom teacher or another teacher specialist, varying from day to day or week to week. Do we have any idea if we can somehow put a consistent schedule in for like the K through six students so that they can settle into a, a routine, whether it's, you know, I personally like the, the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and my older kids love that. Like they really locked into that schedule. Do we have any idea that we can do that for K through six? Or come up with a way that he can know when his Google meets are as opposed to my wife or I having to check her emails throughout the day and try to figure out when his meetings are. And then like, today he was on a meeting for a small group with five students and he was the only one that made it. The other four missed it. So I think that's happening. And do we have a way that we're looking at that?
So again, that's really good feedback and that did come up in the sense of trying to provide families an agenda, a schedule for the week so that you're not being inundated with emails like, don't forget, come on at this time. That we're looking for ways in which to do that. So those are some of the ahas that are coming forward because I, that's exactly what I've heard from parents is the, the seven 12 is very predictable and we understand what it is. Where at the elementary level, it's not so. So we are looking at that and trying to be a little more prescriptive and clear on what that schedule might look like.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. And my only observation on the whole thing, and it kind of just brought me a little bit of a chuckle. We spent a lot of years begging the high school to stop doing group projects and that's something people want now. So you what happens when they don't have sports and activities after school? All right. So now we're headed on to the fee schedule, the exciting part of our meeting. The fee schedule for the use of the public schools.
Yes. Thank you, Susan. This is, this is riveting information. So this is basically for board members review. It is the cost it takes for us to cover custodians when people utilize our buildings. So we plan to increase the cost by 2% and there's a listing of that. The board can have a chance to take a look and we will vote on this at the next Board of Education meeting. The use of our buildings and the access to our buildings is certainly very important to the, the general public. It's not a significant revenue generator for the Board of Education. It really does just cover custodial costs. So total revenue over the course of the year is about $50,000. And we plan to probably be about $5,000 short of that as a result of the shutdown. But we'll recommend a 2% increase. It's consistent with surrounding districts are doing. I had our people in our business office contact other districts. And we can take any questions that you have, but basically it's a listing of all the various areas of the schools that we rent out and what the rates are.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that or how that works? MMS take next time, correct?
I just have a question. If, I, I just, I know that the 2% is usually what we end up doing, but I wonder if we're going to have additional cleaning responsibilities going forward. If 2% is going to be enough, and I don't know how we would know if it was going to be enough or not, but just something to consider, I, I guess.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that, that's the consideration. I guess we're kind of in the planning phases of those things. So even a lot of questions about access to those parts of the facility at this point and how that might vary in terms of outside groups getting together, you know? Be interesting to watch.
Right. Because we don't even know if we're going to have the ability to lease any of the space depending on gathering sizes. We, we just don't know. We don't know what we're looking at yet.
That's true.
Okay. We are moving on to the quarterly budget analysis. Amy's turn.
All right. So I'll take you through where we are as far as March 31st goes. And then I'll take you a little bit through the COVID and probably where we expect to end up at the end of the year. So starting with the revenues in late March, early April, we received some additional choice funding in the amount of about $57,000. However, due to the closing of the schools and therefore the closing of the after school programs, we may have to return about $20,000 to $30,000 of that funding, which is not out of the norm. Building usage revenues are expected to see a deficit of about $10,000, but then we're expected to see a $10,000 surplus in our tuition. So net zero impact there. On the expenditure side of things, you can see as of March 31st, all the way at the bottom, the percent spent to date compared to the same period last year is overall in line. And then the next page where it reviews the trends and experiences, I'll kind of just talk as to what we're seeing right now and how it relates to year end and the COVID impact, since the majority of the COVID impact was pretty much mid-March and, and continuing. So as we had previously reported in the second quarter, we're expecting to see a deficit within the general control budget and the insurance and pension budgets. And now we're also expecting to see a deficit in the outer district budget by about $400,000. We're also expecting to see a loss in the food services program of about $80,000. We're still running the food services program, however, we're not collecting any of the revenue from the students any longer. The other program we're going to expect to see a loss in of about $95,000 is due to the cancellation of the pay for play program, so within the athletic funds. And the good news is that we're hoping that these losses will be offset in the savings that are related to COVID. So as you know, under the governor's executive order, there's a lot of contracts and expenditures, salaries, et cetera, that we're still required to pay whether we're getting the services or not. But one of the contracts that we were, we were able to renegotiate, which is going to give us the majority of our savings is the bus contract. So there was about savings of about $468,000. We're also going to see some savings within the substitute line items. That's about $200,000. And then we're going to have some smaller savings in the other department budgets. So overall, we're expected to see a net savings to the budget of about $330,000 right now. And this does not include the use of any of the lapsing funds. So our non-lapsing fund will be able to remain at the $385,000. So those are just some highlights that I have. Does anybody have any other specific questions?
Anyone? Look, you did such a good job. Maybe nobody has any questions for you.
Perfect. Or I put everybody to sleep, either way.
Thank you. All right. So then we are on to future business, which would be our next board meeting, taking place Tuesday, the 26th. Potentially still from Zoom, I'm assuming, but we'll be told if it's going to be different. So plan on that and watch your emails. And thanks, everybody for watching. We're going to go into a special meeting at eight o'clock with just the board members. And so we're going to leave this meeting and enter a different meeting, but thank you all very much tonight. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody.